Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene the November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen Board of Supervisors meeting. Just quickly, present tonight we have Mr. Jeff Seeley from the Bowling Green District, Mr. Reggie Underwood from the Reedy Church District, Mrs. Nancy Long from the Port Royal District, Jeff Black from the Western Carolina District, and Mr. Thomas is in there from the Mattuponai District. At this time, if you would stand for the indication. Stand for the indication by Mrs. Long.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here together tonight to discuss the issues of the county, lead us to wise decisions and open ears and thoughtful minds as we can make decisions for the benefit of our county. Watch over everyone as they travel home tonight and bring us together again on December ninth at our next meeting. We ask these things to your name. Amen.
All right, opening board comments, Mr. Seeley.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Underwood.
I have none at this time.
Mrs. Long.
And I have none either.
So, we will go on to number four, the continued discussion of possible creation of a towing advisory board.
We had, I think at the last meeting said we would come back in several months and guess kind of rediscover what was happening at, from the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can we have First Sergeant Botkin come up and introduce himself since he is brand new and it's a good opportunity for everybody to meet him.
I'm not First Sergeant yet. I've got five days, so I apologize. I know some of you here, so, but effective the tenth of this month, I will take over as the new area commander here in Bowling Green for now Lieutenant Blidenburg. I was assigned here originally out of the academy in nineteen ninety-eight and worked for Sheriff Lippa initially for five years and I spent ten years working narcotics here in the county as well. Also with Sheriff Lippa, some of his personnel. And then the last five years I've spent in Area Five in Fredericksburg, which becomes Stafford, Spotsy, and the city of Fredericksburg. Quite a busy place to work. The opportunity came for me to come back and I applied and fortunate enough to get the position. So, in five days I will take over as the new area commander. I am aware of the purpose for the meeting tonight, met with Sheriff Lippa as well as one of his captains regards to it, so if you have any questions. I can't make any changes as of yet because I'm not technically the area commander until December the tenth, but I came to provide some insight. And that insight comes from working here, not only as a trooper but an agent. And I'm quite familiar with many of the towers that are here in the room as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Do any of the supervisors have anything that you guys want to bring up for a week?
Yeah, is it, I guess my question to the towers is, in your mind, do you think that what we're trying to do here is to in any way negatively impact what you do in your daily lives with your business? Is, is that a feeling that you have regarding whether we should have tow boards?
Is there, I guess, can I follow that up with a? I'd like to follow with a question. I mean, it's been a while since we met, to be honest with you. I think that was back in the spring when we met the first time, correct, or is it? June, yeah, okay, so early summer. And I guess for me is, my question to you as a follow-up to that is, do you feel like this is a good thing or a necessary thing here in Caroline? I remember at the end of the last meeting that some of you were gonna, said that they were gonna research it and come back to us. So, I guess I'd like to know from your perspective, is this something that we, is this something that we feel is needed, number one? And what is your research, if you've done that, I mean, as far as what do you think from other localities and jurisdictions that have it? You know, is this a positive thing for the county to have? And I'll gladly take anyone down here to answer that.
Can I comment?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Tanya Giles with Blidenburg. I think it's gonna be a good thing, I really do, overall. I think we've got great intentions with this. My question back to the board is, what are your intentions as far as helping us? We've got some great folks that are on the towing system now that work together. Every now and then we have our little clashes, but everybody, we're professionals. We're professionals in what we do. But my question back to you is, what are we gonna be offered as an incentive to keep this board active and to keep it to where we need to be as far as ground laws goes? We don't want this board to come together and then collapse two months down the road because nobody wants to take the initiative to build upon it, act upon it maybe? So, that would be my main concern right now. If you have any suggestions that y'all are gonna feed back to us, I mean, we don't mind feeding to you, but we want to know what you guys are gonna suggest to us as well. Because we all have to work together. This board is gonna work, it's gonna have to work together.
Before you go?
Sure.
You asked us what we were looking for from you. What are you looking for?
Well, we want to keep, of course, we want to keep the professionalism. We want to keep the training going, of course, that's our number one priority, training and to be out there working with the state and the county, we want to be able to do that. But at the same time, there's gotta be a cap on the list of folks that come in here. The list of folks with the professionalism and the talents, I'm not saying somebody that's just gonna jump on board because they know there's an open for somebody on the towing list. You know, we've got, like I said, we've got some folks in the county that have been, you know, we've been working together and everything else. We want to make sure that the list is at a maximum, not wide open for everybody to come in as they go. If we're able to work together, it's gotta be, I'm not saying not professional, I want everybody to be on the same page. But what we gotta do, what, sorry, I don't, that language is a little bad. What we need to do is, we need to be able to focus on the amount of folks that are available and work within that. I don't want to say we don't need other folks on there, it's just I think we need to put a cap on what we have because the county is not that big to begin with. What we need to do is, we need to work with what we have and then go from there. Instead of adding on and kind of adding to the, like a cluster.
So, is there, is there a problem with the way the towing list is created now? Or is there a way to make it better?
It's not a problem with its creation, it's just we need to make sure that, in my theory and probably with a couple of other folks, we don't want to, there's a pie out there that everybody's working on and everybody gets a slice of that pie. If you bring in other towers or other folks that, one that may not be in the county or don't have their place in the county for whatever reason, they're taking our revenue away from us. So, we want to make sure we're working with the county, for the county, with the county.
So, we should do something like say that the tow list is going to give, I guess, bonus points if you're in the county so you can be approved or some sort of system like that?
Well, we're all, we're all approved in one fashion or another. Whether we've got the trucks that are able to do the job, whether we have the training, the equipment, all of the above, it's gotta be straight across either way you look at it. But my thing is, is we want a certain amount, you can only cut that pie in so many ways before somebody starts, you know, it starts affecting somebody. I mean, you've got the small mom and pops in this county that, that's our business.
Right.
So, if you keep giving it to other people or we keep allowing other people to come in, it's gonna take away from us that we've been striving and we've been killing ourselves day and night to keep the county going, whether it's for the state or for the county. So, my thing is just, we just want to keep it to the folks that we have now versus spread it on out. And let's work with the folks we have, we have some great folks, we really do. You know, whether it's east side or west side.
Right, so who better to tell us or give us the information than the group itself?
Correct.
So, I would think that the towers in the county would sit down with us and talk about what is needed to ensure that the priority is to the folks who are here in the county and that we put some type of regulation or something in place to ensure that it's just not happenstance that a person comes in and begins to tow. So, I think that's gonna come from your input to us to say what it is that you think we should be doing on this end to make sure that we're protecting your interests.
Correct, and I'm sure all the folks are welcoming your, you know, your suggestions as well as we can offer ours. That's what, that's what it's all about, to be able to keep this in a good rhythm and going and deserve, and deserve the folks.
Well, so you guys are the experts and we're the people who are reading paper and reading county ordinance from here and there. And many counties are doing different things. So, the question is, what's best for us, if anything? So, that's gonna have to be the input from the folks that are doing the job. We're not gonna do it.
Correct. My other question, and this may be a little off of the beaten path there, but when you get the board in place, are we gonna have a tow on the board with the other folks as well? Is there gonna be a chance to have a tow or two on there to give a little bit more insight?
Absolutely, has to be.
Well, because what I'm saying is, if you guys, not, no pun intended, you guys, y'all are there to regulate, help regulate it, but you don't see the limelight.
Right, right.
You don't see what we go through or things like that, so.
Could I, could, yeah.
From where I'm signed, we have tow boards that work. So, basically the way that it's compiled is you have a set panel, the same as you have the board supervisors. And usually it's an odd number and then those people are elected to be on that board for a period of time. Usually it's favorable to have a chairman and that chairman usually is not Sheriff Lippa or myself, or not normally the chairman, it's recommended. It's comprised, it's compiled of people from the actual tow lists. It's these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen in this room. And complaints are brought before the tow board. If it's a complaint against someone from the sheriff's office, normally the sheriff would still handle that. It's his personnel and my personnel with it's state police. But the board itself is comprised of people from the actual tow list. Owners and operators make up, and the strength is in that group. The ones that are successful, normally if there's a complaint, that complaint is brought before the board and the board listens to the complaint and then the decision is made based upon that. The same, it's the same concept as with the board supervisors. Each person on that board has a vote.
But there have to be other people on the board because somebody on the board could be listening to complain against themselves.
Absolutely.
So, you have to have a citizen?
There usually is at least one citizen that is, can be nominated. It can either come from the board supervisors, it could come from the sheriff's office, it could come from somebody from the state police, but you usually have one citizen that's not involved directly in the actual towing.
So, you know, you said you've worked with tow boards in the past?
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about some of the positives and some of the negatives. I think we need to hear the negative as well, as well as the positive, if there are some.
There are.
If you?
Yes, sir, there are. Well, first of all, his, I don't want to speak for you, but his background is from the Virginia State Police, obviously, numbered years. And basically a lot of the policies and procedures that he has in place mirror the Virginia State Police. We are pretty much mirroring each other in the way things are done. It's my opinion, and he could probably speak better than I can, there's not a lot of complaints. I'm aware of the complaint from one of your constituents. And it sounds to me, and I don't want to get into that, but it sounds like those situations are somewhat isolated. They're not constantly occurring. The positive side of it is, is that the ladies and gentlemen that are behind me have a voice. They have a right to come to the board and be heard and to listen and voice what their problems are. And I don't think that's ever a negative because that's democracy. They, go ahead.
And conversely, if those that are on the list can again voice to whoever is in charge of that, whether if they have a problem with the state police on their list, they would go to the area commander. They have a problem with whoever's on our list, they would come to us, okay? So, that's what basically you have, is almost the same thing. And when you look at, when I heard Tammy speak, I think what caused some of this problem is how it's split from east to west. For example, as you know, the First Sergeant here knows, when he was my trooper, we were east and west in Caroline and King George was on its own. So, when you look at the numbers and splitting of the east and west, we went straight down the power lines, which gave east and west. And when you looked at east and west, when you look at our east side of it, it was three of them. Bud, Caroline Garage, and Poplar Inn. When you look at the state police, it had Bud's, Caroline Garage, it had Morgan's Towing and Pine Hill Towing, which they're not on the county list because they know they don't have a business in Caroline. So, that's what you had on the east side. On the west side, we have Bud's, Norton's, Hillcrest, and Anytime, so it's four. When you look at the state police list, you have number one, who's not in our county, Anytime, Bud's, Hillcrest, Norton, Poplar Inn, and Woody's. So, that's the seven that are on the west side. So, that's different than ours. And then in doing so, there's an application for them to fill out. And everyone has the application because, you know, quite frankly, it goes through all of the county. Do they have, you know, have they paid their county taxes? Are they straight with the county? And then, you know, they have to meet our needs and normally the state police follows that. But they have a difference when it comes to, we look for you to be in the county and store in the county. The state police list could be different.
And it is, it is. We do have people currently on our zone list, which our zones, our zones are broken up differently. It used to mirror the exact one that Sheriff just described, but it's been changed before I took office. I'm still not quite sure why it was changed, I'll certainly, something I certainly will look into. But right now we do have towers on the list that have a business within the county, so therefore they meet the criteria to be on that zone list. But the actual storage location where the vehicle would be taken to is outside the county. Close proximity, but not within the county. But bear in mind, a lot of the people that Sheriff Lippa and his personnel are dealing with, most of the time are county residents. Ninety-five, as you know, is people from fifty states, so the idea of them being outside the Commonwealth of Virginia is very high. And so, a tow from here to a storage location that might be different may not be that big of a deal to them. But I certainly understand why he has the policy that he does because ultimately you're responsible for the people here.
First Sergeant, can I ask you, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
In your experience with tow boards, and I was here just a minute ago, how does someone? And I guess I can ask, I guess Sheriff Lippa, you were saying from the policy that is now, if they follow the, go by the procedures that you have and, you know, if they have whatever requirements you have, they can get on the list, correct? So, if I'm a tower and I want to get on your list, I just meet your requirements?
Meet the county's requirements.
Yes, yes, the county's requirements. What about for, with the tow boards? So, let's say I'm new in Caroline County, I'm opening up a towing business or I want to get into the business. How is that, I mean, are tow boards, I guess, are they, are we forming monopolies here or? I mean, I guess that's the question, are we kind of giving business to? And I understand we want to obviously stay within the county, but what if someone new comes in and wants to start a business or are we, you know, what is the requirement from those boards?
The application process will be followed. You could mirror probably exactly what Sheriff Lippa already has in place and then it would be brought before the tow board and ultimately the towers would have to make the decision. But I caution you of that and I think your thought process is one that probably most of this room would agree to. Yet we, they don't want to prevent everybody from coming in, but we don't want to have everybody coming in at the same time and there is only a small piece of the puzzle for everybody. But are we creating a monopoly by only having so many? Here's the thing, in my almost twenty years in this county, the list that he read you from has basically been somewhat of the same list that we've had since I came here in nineteen ninety-eight. That's basically the same list. So, I don't know that we're gonna have this huge influx of people wanting to come here. And there are some advantages to the tow board. You asked that question, somebody asked that question specifically. One of them is, if you use the policy he currently has in place, it's going to set a set of guidelines that the board supervisors agrees to and then we both, both agencies are following, okay? So, right now we kind of have an A and a B where the line splits the county. The state police has one line, sheriff's office has the old traditional line. And this, by doing this, it would establish one policy that we're all gonna work off of. I don't want to speak for Sheriff Lippa, but ultimately, our responsibility is public safety and one of the things now that we are so inundated with is quick clearance. Our secondary crashes, whether that's on two oh seven or three oh one or ninety-five. And so, by us having the ability to get these folks to us quickly, you know, deputies and troopers aren't getting hit, citizens aren't getting, we aren't having their secondary crashes. So, at the end of the day, it's who can we get there safely and quickly in order to clear the scene? So, we're not standing in the roadway.
I have a question, Jeff. Sergeant, I'm sorry, but you said where you are, where you were to have a tow board, where was that?
I'm stationed in Area Five, which is out of Fredericksburg. And so Stafford County has an established tow board and then Spotsy does as well. It's run a little differently, but it kind of somewhat mirrors itself.
All right, really my question is, you read a list for the state police?
Yes, sir.
Tony read your list and he's got his list. Hillcrest, I don't think is in the county, right? There's somebody out of the county? All right, well, who is one that's out of the county on your list?
Number one.
Number one.
Number one.
Number one, number one towing and Woody's currently.
How would you, and that's really my point, is how it works. Because I think part of what happens is, and I know in Mr. the Reedy Church case?
Yes, sir.
Somebody showed up from the sheriff's department.
That's right.
They called whoever. When there's an accident, the state police is the one who makes the call, right? And you go by your list the same as whoever's next on the list?
Yes and no. So, when I started here in ninety-eight, the sheriff's office at the time did not work any crashes at all. And now the current policy is, single vehicle accidents, I'm sorry.
Our policy obviously is a little bit different. The state handles most of our injury crashes and those more serious in nature because they can allow the troopers to go to the hospital. Since we don't have a hospital, we keep our deputies here to maintain.
But I mean, my real question is, you know, my car breaks down.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's broken down on two oh seven. If a state police trooper shows up?
Yep, and you need to.
He goes by his state police?
You're correct, correct.
List. But if a county deputy shows up, you go by your county list?
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Which they are, again, if you're looking at the same, and again, our rotations might be different. So, and this is something that the towers are familiar with. You could be the next one on my list and then you could also be the next one on his list and it looks like you've got two calls in a row.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out. Because in that case, you've got to tow my car to Fredericksburg instead of towing Reggie's car to Poplar Inn. So, how do you work that out? That's?
Well, it's obviously, once you, it's not an easy answer. So, basically because we're two separate, we're working together obviously, but we're two separate entities, two separate agencies, it is completely possible for the next one to be, you know, this particular towing company.
Towing Company A for you, and then Jeff's car is right behind me, he breaks down, Tony calls towing company A, so I'm right in front of Poplar Inn and I'm saying, gee, somebody else just got two calls in front of me, the same guy.
But wait now, if we have the situations that you're describing, we first of all ask everyone if you have a preference. Do you have owner's request?
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
And we always do.
You have a right to have whoever you tow, whoever you would like to respond to tow your vehicle.
Exactly. Whether they're on our list, as long as it's not a traffic hazard that creates a problem, as the First Sergeant said, we will allow you to get a record. If you, if you're from Maryland and you broke down right in front of Poplar Inn and you want somebody from Maryland and you're not a traffic hazard, you can get that person from Maryland. And he's not on either one of our lists. Our list deals with primarily when you have the crashes, that you're called to the crash scene. Because everyone that breaks down, we ask, I know the state police asks, do you have a preference? Do you have a motor clock regardless of what it might be? The old Amoco used to have one or a AAA that everyone's familiar with. We honor all owner's requests provided it's not that immediate traffic hazard.
Okay. Bad scenario, I hit a deer.
Uh huh.
It's an accident.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So, now my car won't move.
Correct.
Jeff is, Jeff is following me, we're going somewhere and he hits another deer.
Yes.
So, we're two miles apart.
Yes.
What happens? Because those are accidents.
If you do not have a preference, you call the next one that's in rotation on your approved list.
Let me ask you something.
But based on who shows up, you got the same person?
They even have to decline, whoever hit, so if you call?
In your vein, dispatch.
You know, towing A and they get the first call.
But you call for me?
That's correct.
And we get towing company A?
A's responding.
So, A's responding to me.
Sheriff's office gets the second call.
Right.
And they, their deputy gets on scene and he also calls?
Towing Company A.
Next one is A, they have to decline it because there is a time limit. Theirs is forty-five minutes, ours is thirty minutes.
What if you had two trucks?
I was just thinking, some of them have two trucks though.
In case they do, again.
Is dispatch making the calls for both of you?
Our computer A dispatch will take care of those that are in rotation, okay?
For both departments?
Yes, the dispatcher handles theirs, ours handles ours.
Yeah, your dispatch, the state police dispatch handles you.
State police dispatch, we get enrichment automatically, the CAD. Yeah, and it's, and it takes the human decision out of it. It's next available on the list, that way there's a level of fairness for both agencies to all the people that are here.
So, in order to prevent that, the only solution would be to have one next call list?
See, the problem with it is, is you're dealing with two different agencies. And two different dispatches. And so, yeah, and that's?
So, that's the thing we can't fix periodically.
No, no.
But that's, that's not the norm, right? That's an outlier or it doesn't happen that often, I wouldn't think.
Just a couple of years, a lot of years out there.
Saying never is a?
I don't want never, but what's, what's the chance that that happens? Does it happen often?
It could because when you look, well, well, and it hasn't.
Doesn't happen.
Well, it hasn't in our situation when you only have three or four that's on the list.
Right.
And you have somebody that's declined.
Right.
And they could, and then if it's a heavy duty, which a couple of them have?
Right.
It then brings a heavy duty into it. So, you know, again, what you're looking at from a tow board is, and hearing y'all and what I'm thinking, if we have one list, in other words, if you, if we established a tow board, then it's one policy of who will be on there. That means that the same ones that are on there will work for both of us, but they still could be different times of when it comes in.
But his people wouldn't be on our list because their route one is out of the county, right?
Don't say our list because it would be the county list.
Well, the county's ours.
That we both, well, we both follow.
But route one was the company you mentioned.
Number one.
They wouldn't, number one, they wouldn't be on our list if we had a tow board.
If the board went, if the board went with the current policy that is in place for the sheriff's department and said, yes, this is what we're gonna put in place. And one of the key ingredients is that the business is housed within the county of Caroline. And right now we do have some, well, and not only is it a business here, but then the vehicle has to be towed and stored here. We have ones that have a business, but then their storage location is outside. So, it's really, the advantage of the board is that the supervisors say, this is what we want. There's a level of fairness to it and everybody has to agree to it. The other advantage is if you have a problem, it's brought to the tow board and it's openly discussed so that it's then solved. The disadvantage is, and you asked me the negatives of it, is that that's circumvented. In other words, the board has to say, and the towers have to agree, if there's a problem, it's brought to the board, the board makes a decision and then it's finalized. If there's a, hey, you're off for thirty days? You know, and that's, that's the downside. And that doesn't happen all the time, but you know, that's something that they have to be aware of.
Let me ask you this, how, one of the biggest complaints that I've heard and I've talked to several towers independently, is the state police and the county list being the same. We're in the process of changing First Sergeants and I understand you're not capable of making any changes yet.
Right.
But would it be an unrealistic request from us, bar going from a tow board to say, can we make the two lists the same and can we reset the boundary to the way it would be as if there was a tow board? That way we solve sixty percent of the problems that we have with those two changes that only you can make? Because my only option is to go, we're gonna take it all over and we're gonna call it a tow board and we're gonna set the boundaries and everybody's gotta play by the same rules anyways.
Right.
So, what are the, what are the philosophical change possibilities that the state police could actually make that change for us so that we don't have to hop out through all these hoops to accomplish what you could do in a policy change?
Well, first of all, like? Well, first of all, like, in ten, in five days, I can, I can look at the policies that's in place now and try to determine, you know, why it was moved, and I don't know why. I'm being honest, I don't know why it was changed.
And we don't either, to be fair.
And once I'm able to determine that, I can look at it and say, yes, do I, I have the authority to change? Yes, I do. I have, I have the authority to go back to the original, the old 44 or current list for the sheriff's department to say that these are our boundaries between Zone 1 and Zone 2. And basically, if you, if you're trialling down 207, the main power lines, they go right down the heart of the county. Everything to the left of that is Zone 441 or Zone 1 for the sheriff's office. Everything to the right of it's Zone 442. So basically, it's, the interstate's on the 441, and everything more rural part of the county is on Zone 2, 442. Yes, I have the authority to do that.
Now, can I interject, and I'm going to give you the little bit of the history part to it? Because I know everyone in here, and in doing so, and I know Woody's towing is here, and God bless Woody and God rest his soul, when he was in Mangla, and still was, he wanted to get into Caroline's list. And as the first sergeant, I did not allow that. Because, as you heard Tammy, you know, Tammy talk about, I wanted somebody that was in Caroline County. No disrespect to Woody or anything else, but then if you do, then you open up Thornburg, to which we had Campbell's and two or three others that could say, hey, I can come straight on down here, and, and I could be in the Caroline interstate quicker than, you know, what you would have, uh, you know, depending on, like Hillcrest or whatever, depending on where it was, even on that side of, or Bud's, as a matter of fact. Because of what they were saying, I kept it fair for all. And, and that's why we kept it in Caroline County of what we have. I said, when I look at Morgan, Morgan, he worked for Vito, I've known him for all these years. And then he was up there in Port Royal. And in order to be on our list, he had to meet certain criteria. And the criteria was, you have to, you know, we had to deal with signing and not everything else on the vehicle. So I know everyone that's in here. And I don't know if that helps, it doesn't help, and I'm sure I've upset some of them because of what we've done here. And, and again, the first sergeant, like I told him, he's the first sergeant, I don't run the state police anymore.
Can I add one thing back to what Mrs. Giles had said about everybody being on it? There is a zoning component to having a storage yard, and I can't speak to all the details of that, but I imagine some of the folks that have had to go through zone and know what that entails. But you, you have to have a zone in the right piece of land. So just because you own an acre or two and want to store some cars on it, that's not a legal zoning thing that you're going to get a permit for. So, the thought, the thought that suddenly there's going to be 10 other towers that could meet the list, that you have to actually have the stuff, the, the storage in Caroline, ultimately comes back, I think, to the board's super.
For a special exception.
So, I don't know that the tow board really would have much effect on that. Overall growth of extra towers is what I'm trying to say.
But that helps them get on the list, going through that process of getting storage in Caroline.
Correct.
And then, that's what they want to do to get on the list, I mean, we've got a process.
Correct, and that the board of supervisors controls right now. So I don't think you'll have a overload of the process now.
Yeah, something's going to stay the same.
With, with or without the tow board, as long as you're using that list and could get that list between the state police and the county, all using the same one, then everybody that's here would be ultimately controlled by a board of supervisors through zoning.
Right.
But if, if you already have a set of standards that are in your packets and say, if you were going to be on my list, you have to be of this, 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 this. So, as far as limiting the slices in that pie, we can't, and I wouldn't want to, because, God bless anybody that wants to go in business, but they have to meet that criteria in order to be a slice of your pie, right? They all have to do the same quality standards.
Correct, and everyone got a copy of this, and we started it, I know this one was revised in 2012. Over five years ago, this was revised, to which we had those already on the list altogether. And they, and I think they have a copy.
And towing companies that don't want to do that, that, that they're not on the list, and they can.
They can apply.
They can have people call and call them directly, or say, I prefer this tower or that tower. But you have your set standard, so we're starting on a level play with all our towers. They all have basically the same type of setup. So we've got our quality control there, so we need to get our zones set up. And then, am I correct in stating, thinking that I see the tow board as mostly a board to deal with problems, with complaints?
Most of the time, that's, but there's not that many, and that's the thing. You know, most of the meetings that I've attended, it's, there's not a lot of complaints. They're, they're dealing with...
So most of them are meeting, what, maybe twice a year?
No, they usually meet once a month.
Once a month, and, and again, and, and like I've said before, if the board wants this, take it. And my suggestion to you is, is you set up, because you'd have to set up an advisory board, that whoever you put on the list, I think each and every one of them should have a voice. So, depending on how many you're going to have on there. And I, and I spoke with both Sheriff Decatur and Sheriff Harris, and the two tow boards there, along with Sheriff Dempsey in King George. And, and doing so, when they were talking to me today, one sheriff does something different than the other. And that's just the way that they do it. Those two, King George, because of where they are at the river, and then Spotsy, they're the only two. The rest of us around do not have a towing board.
Sheriff, can you, can you, um, they're, I don't think they're on the same page. They, they, they're thinking that if the board is going to be created, there's going to be one, uh, person that's going to be called, and it's going... They're, they're, they're still going to be, the state police is still going to have their rotation list, even if it's the same rotation list in Caroline. When he, when one of his deputies pull up, they're going, they're not going to be calling the sheriff's office, like you were, you were asking, and your answer was, you didn't get your answer. Your answer is, no, the board's not going to change it to where it's only one person's going to make a phone call, and y'all are going to get this, this, this group of people. The state police are still going to be dispatched out of the state, out of Richmond, and Tony Luthos still going to have their dispatch, dispatching the calls. So it's still going to, whether they're all, everybody's on the same list, there's still going to be that, the question you were asking. The board's not going to be able to create it to where they're going, there only going to be one person's going to be called.
No, you're, you're right, but what I want to get to is, one set of towers for the, for, for one side, and one set of towers for the other side, and there'll be one line, and both agencies work from one man. Because most of the problems that I heard, that's what I heard. The other thing that, that Mrs. Long brought up, that I don't think we've ever have really resolved, if we, if we don't have a towing board, let's, let's go there first. Is there a way we can put an issues number on whatever the owner is handled for towing?
Oh, complaint number in the order of numbers?
A complaint number.
You want the who to contact, if they, if they have...
If they're not happy, they call somebody.
Talking about a citizen we call?
Citizen, yes.
Right.
And it would be somebody non-towing, non-state police, but somebody that, that they could call and talk to and say, we've got an issue, and we're all pointing at Charles. Uh, at my point, remember that night, Tony, was if, if a deputy's giving somebody a ticket, they're not going to want to call you and complain about towing or anything else because they're going to be seeing you or your deputy in court. So you would need somebody that's sort of off to the side.
I think the problem that that creates is this, ultimately, Sheriff Blippa is responsible for every person that, that he employs. And that's, that's his responsibility, is to share it in the same as...
They have a really good relationship, so they would talk back and forth.
Same as the state police, if it's something involving the state police, you know, and these, there's a process, obviously, for complaints to be handled from citizens. Um, and, and that, that's both agencies.
But what about towing complaints?
They would, they would go to the respective one that, that they had the issue with. And, and I don't know how that could ever be changed, per se, unless you decided you want to have a board, and that's what you want to do, because then neither one of us would have anything to do with that complaint or that ruling as far as the towers are concerned. We would still get involved in case our personnel did something they weren't supposed to.
But that's how we all added up here in the first place, was what we couldn't do.
They would have a voice in, as to what happened, and that's really the problem. They would be able to discuss it first as a board.
That's correct.
So, that would alleviate any bias or anything else, one way or the other. I mean, like I said, we're all professionals, we may not all agree. But we just want to make sure that we're getting the best avenue for folks to have a complaint. But it goes back to those towers who would listen. Some, some, some of us not going to mount to a hill of beans.
And then if you're the one that's towing them, and you had a problem with that tower, who are you going to contact? Are you going to call?
The tow board.
Well, okay, yes, if you have your tow board. But I'm saying, you have one of them that calls, if they want to make a complaint. And you guys would get that. Do you think that would be any different than if they called whichever one of us that called them?
It may.
The Attorney General's office also looks at towing related actions.
But it, but it may.
I have no problems if they want to call the county administrator.
I do, I don't want to put it...
I don't want to, yeah.
Sorry, Charles.
Does anybody, you brought an interesting point, they can call the Attorney General's office. I wonder how many people, I think I'm pretty plugged in, I didn't know that. Did you?
Yeah, that's, I did.
I had no idea that that was a...
That is an habit.
That's what it is, yeah.
Do they have something set up for just for that?
I, I can't say that for sure, but I've been involved with a couple complaints in which individuals call, and they went directly to the Attorney General's in order to be investigated. And most of them were involving the, the total fees. They felt like the fees, the, the citizen felt like the fees were too high. And that's the reason that the complaint was made and then investigated from the Attorney General's office.
What happens in that case?
So...
I don't know.
So, so...
These people are separate, it's like us, you know?
So for me, if there was a, a person felt that way.
Yes, sir.
And they called the tow board, and the two towers talk or the board talk, and there was not an issue, to me, it just keeps that out of the, you can always call the Attorney General if you don't like what the board says.
Absolutely, I mean, you're right.
But, but I would think a person, if they heard from a, from the tow board and say, we've talked to Underwood Towing and Well Within Line, this is, and a person doesn't have to accept it, but at least it's been heard.
Yes, sir.
And by the, by the folks who are regulating the towing.
Well, I, I can say, I don't want to speak for Sheriff, I keep saying that, but we go back a long way. If, if a citizen in, in this county or outside this county has a complaint about the service they receive in which a Virginia trooper's involved, or the sheriff's department is involved, our, our job is to listen to that. We, we're the platform for them to advise what was wrong and what they felt, how they felt they were, they were, they were wrong. Now, can we fix every single problem? No, because it's a free state, the, the towers behind us have a right to assess fees and so forth. And, and we, you know, it's, it's a free market state, so some of those problems may never be resolved, the same as problems that are brought before the board. Some, sometimes they can't be resolved. But we certainly are willing to listen to any citizen that calls and says they have a complaint about something that occurred. I mean, that's part of our, our jobs.
And sometimes it may not be resolved to the person's liking, but at least, whether they like it or not, that's, it's been heard by another party, and...
Yes, sir.
Sometimes you've got to go with the flow. I mean, it, it happens, so it's not to take away, it's an opportunity, I think, for a line of communication to be opened, so that tower is not out there by themselves.
You know, if I can, when you, you talk about that, because, you know, the first sergeant's saying, most of it dealt with fees, and everyone saw what the fee structure had to be. And how many complaints do we get when they think that the trooper or the deputy is on the tape with the towers? That, that's, the complaint that always comes in. You call them because they're your friend. And that's why we ask for owner's requests first, one, and two, the computer A dispatch rotates it.
Now, was, was Reggie's case just an anomaly, or what?
It was just one, it was, you know, it was just one that was a fluke, it dealt with the building, we finally got a...
No, I mean, my understanding of that case was the deputy, the county deputy called without asking for a preference or anything like that, they just called somebody.
I, we dealt with the deputy because that was a personnel issue. So to answer you, I could say that...
So it was just an anomaly, once, it was a fluke?
It, it was, the deputy will not make that mistake.
Okay.
I have a question. Is the board going to adopt Tony's tow laws, or the sheriff's department tow laws? Or is the board going to form the tow board of towers and community people, however that many that may be, and they make a tow ordinance? Because I'm a little unclear about that.
My understanding...
For me, I would think that he would take what he already has, and you guys would go through it, redline it, add, and we'd come back and we'd talk about what needs to be added, based on your expertise. Because, like I said, we're not the experts, so you would have to tell us if it makes sense, if it doesn't make sense, this needs to be added. You would be the, the board, along with the other towers, would be, would be the people that would put that together.
And what happens when they can't agree to that?
Here's what it says about law, prior to adopting an ordinance or entering into a contract to this section, and this is 46.2-1217, the local governing bodies may regulate certain towing. So it tells you, pursuant to this section, the, the local governing body shall appoint an advisory board to advise the governing body with regard to the appropriate provisions of the ordinance or terms of the contract we're talking about. The advisory board shall include representatives of local law enforcement, towing and recovery operators, and the general public. So you would have to do that first in order to...
It's a trans...
Right. So, I mean, we don't always agree, right? So, I mean, we pass stuff all the time, and we, order one, three to two, I mean, so, I don't expect them to all agree, but they can come to the consensus, I'm sure.
But the key to it is, is with the ruling of the board, if that's the way that the board supervisors wants this to be handled. Whatever that ruling is, whatever the vote is, that's the way it goes.
I want to clarify, one thing here is that we keep saying, they're the experts, haven't, we're not talking an advisory board made up strictly of, of towers, as, as the sheriff just read. Because it has, it has to be in proportion, because if not, we have, we have the towers policing themselves, basically. So you've got to have citizens there, you've got to have a board there, you've got to have your law enforcement. It has to be in equal proportion. So, I just don't want it, it to sound like everybody's going to have a seat at the table, but terms would certainly rotate around if that were what this board decided to do. I will remind the board that every time we form a committee and we have meetings, we're, we're taking more staff time and more effort and, and a lot more time to, to get this done in expense. So we want to make sure this is something we really want to do and not something we can take what we've got and improve upon. So I'll just throw that out there, because we need to think about that.
That's what they get paid for.
Could I ask a question?
Can I ask a question?
Well, um, can I go first? Thank you. Back to, I, I think one of the problems we're really not addressing, or, or I don't think we're addressing is, um, Bud's charges $100 to hook, hook my car up. Anytime charges $100, $110. But there's a company in Bowling Green called Floyd's Towing who charges $400 to hook you up. How are you going to address the fact that somebody gouged you?
They wouldn't be, because that's the approved list, and, and, and you all have that in your package. So it can't be, that person would not be on our towing list because they wouldn't meet exactly what you're saying. They all agreed when we first did this of how much it would be if this tow service, between a certain times a day, they all know that.
Everybody's got the same rate?
They will for the, for, for us, they are.
To be, that, but that's what you're proposing.
No, that's what we've done, that's what we've been doing. So it won't happen like that.
How come that other one was so high?
That's the sheriff's list, though, correct?
Yeah.
That is correct.
That's not the state police list.
No, and the state police might have different, different fees.
So back again, you guys are going to charge $100, but this company called Floyd Stowing is going to charge $400, and I'm on the state police list.
That's correct.
It can, it can happen.
It can happen.
It can happen like that.
So that's, how do I, I mean, really, that's the bottom line, because you're all going to take my car and put it somewhere and store it, but my issue's going to be, you charge $100 and somebody else charges $400. How do, how do we address that?
Well, follow the policy, you know, when you...
But, but the state police won't follow it.
You get it, we won't follow.
They, they don't have to.
Put a board in place, and that way you can have control of it, because all being the board, if you want policy, $100.
But, I mean, it's...
You're saying with a board.
Just to play devil's advocate for a second, though, Kent, is if, I mean, there's only so many towers on the board, but, I mean, are those rates, currently, right now, are your rate, the rates that the towers accept are, are accepted by you, right? But, I mean, it's quite devil's advocate for a second though, Kent, is if, I mean, there's only so many towers on the board, but, I mean, are those rates, currently, right now, are your rate, the rates that the towers accept are, are accepted by you, right? Are those the rates that are accepted? I mean, the rates that are in that packet, who is setting those rates currently?
We, the towers and us, we all could. Basically, we had no way to really raise them rates right now.
So if, if we go to a tow.
If you have the board, you should have a way to go, change, the towers can come to me.
So in theory.
Always say, we need a rate. I mean, right now, we really don't have a way to do that.
You're talking about regulating tow's in the counties, what you're talking about.
I'm, I'm just talking about fair.
Well, that's, that's what.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing right now, in theory, on a tow board, it, the price could easily go up a lot. Because, because if the tower's now in control, and I'm not, taking nothing away from you, I understand.
You still got, you still got.
But, but they can say, hey, look, the, the, the price, the, the Sheriff Lippa is, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, Sheriff Lippa has kept the price too low, and now all of a sudden, we think it needs to go from the hundred dollar hookup to a hundred and fifty dollar hookup, and they can make that decision. Because they did afford to do that. They can, they can raise their own.
Yeah, but, but, but that gets to my point of, it's not, and, and I have this issue a lot with profit versus patriotism, but the reality is, they're saying a hundred and fifty dollars, if that's what the going rate is, fine. But I can't have one of them saying it's three hundred dollars. And that's where we get, it's a, you know, like you said, First Sergeant, it's a fair system. If I charge five hundred dollars to bring my wrecker out and hook you up, that's my charge.
The tow board can control those fees, and it's something that they have to agree upon, and looking at the document that he has, creates a level of fairness for everybody that's being towed. And the reality is, is that most of the towers behind you, they're dealing, most of the time, not all the time, with people, local people, well, those people are going to come back to them in the future if they need a tow, they need work done on their vehicles, so you kind of can't rob Peter to pay Paul, so it's. In other words, you can't cut your own throat off to deal with them once and never, instead of dealing with them ten times.
What's the difference in the rate between the sheriff's towers and the state police towers? What's the difference in the rate for any given tower?
I want to be fair to the First Sergeant though, because what he has up in Spotsylvania and Stafford is different than what you have here.
Yeah, but I mean, what do we have in Kew?
We expect that.
But, well, then again, I think I want to give him the fairness for him to look into it, because he might not know the fees right now.
And I'm going to go back to my, sort of my first question was, if it, with you now moving in, and I understand that, that the towers have been able to raise rates, that, that seems to be common knowledge. If we, if we don't have a tow board, can we, can we get everything on a level playing field, talk about a rate increase, and leave it the way it is? And the state police and the sheriff's office agree, zones, towers, and rates?
I think the zone list is something that can be addressed. As far as the rates from the state police, I don't know legally, I can tell a specific tower what he can and cannot charge. I mean, I certainly can voice an opinion that, hey, five hundred dollars to tow from the one eleven down to the one ten is astronomical at three o'clock in the afternoon. You know, that's, that's certainly a conversation that can be had, but I don't know legally, I can tell them. The sheriff has, has the authority, has a lot more authority to.
But he can't legally tell them either.
Yes.
No, I got, no, I got a tow truck at home. I'm bringing my tow truck and I'm hooking somebody up. You can't tell me how much I can charge.
He's got an ordinance. He's got an ordinance. He controls that.
But, but if you're not on the list.
If you're not on the list, you can't.
Not on the list, it's totally different. When I say request, to answer, again, from what you have, from who's on our approved list, if they all that's on our approved list want to get together again and they want to look at these fees.
Tammy's got something to say.
Then we can do that. That could be done.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, from, from that part of it, as far as being fair to all, it would be, this is what they want. And that's why, if you notice, there is no fee for the heavy duty, because the heavy duty is more involved.
Right, I know you're going there.
Not any folks in the county driving tractor trailers.
Abnormal recovery also, and, and she, the sheriff knows that too.
Yeah, and that's what I was, that's what I was going to say, right, I mean, that's what I was going to say, every situation is going to be different. The, the normal passenger vehicles versus the tractor trailers, what takes to get it up, the time consuming, the equipment that's brought out there, that's going to hopefully be a whole fluctuation difference right there.
And it could be a car, they've gone over a guard rail.
And circumstances, just like without being fire and rescue, when I go out on a call, every circumstance is going to be different. You can't always have the same thing. Everything's going to be different, unfortunately. So really to, able to put those prices, as you were asking, you're really going to have a hard time keeping that price.
And that's the thing to realize.
But I mean, it's, it's just a ballpark, and that's what I'm saying, because if you buy, if you go to the store right now and buy a four by eight sheet of plywood, it's going to cost you twenty dollars. If a hurricane comes through, it, that same sheet of plywood's going to cost you a hundred dollars. That's gouging. I don't think anybody wants that to happen, and you guys have said the rates are the same, you won't do that. I'm wondering if somebody that's not, you know, as good as you folks, if they would do that, and that's all I'm trying to prevent.
I was just going to say, if you ended up getting a tow board, then you can regulate all of that. State police would have to follow who's on your list, and I think it's going to go back to the pricing part. As a state, I don't think it's going to get into that. I think that would be up to the board. So we would have no say-so either, other than the fact that if this is what you want, this is what it is.
But they would have a say-so. As a tow board, they would say what's fair, they would come to an understanding of what is fair, and they would recommend it to us. So, so that way you're not hearing from one, but you're hearing from the group, and they're coming to a consensus. If in fact gas goes up to six dollars a gallon, then quite naturally, every time that diesel pulls out, it's going to cost them more money. If insurance goes up thirty-five percent, it's going to cost them more money. So, so those are things that could come and have a discussion about.
What, just a curious, and you may not know this, what is the, in comparison, you were talking about, someone was talking about trying to compare, you know, the state police list to what we have in the county. But how about in areas where we have tow boards first, where we don't, as far as price?
I mean, I haven't heard of any of the complaints.
Yeah, and like, say, King George, because they have a tow board, right? So, I mean, what would we have for, you know?
King George is in yours, and the sheriff, I think, handles that one too. So it's, he'll goes back to the sheriff for, for that dispendence there, even though you have a board, because Gil can be.
And. Stafford's done the same one?
Yeah.
That rate was based off of the surrounding counties of their tow, Stafford and Spotsylvania, King George rate.
Those rates were also used on the tow boards in Stafford, Spotsia. And it's, it's kind of a, but obviously further north you go is the more things.
That's the nature of being a.
But it's not regulated over there, there's no regulation as far as the sheriff's department, or the sheriff doesn't regulate, say, okay, he puts a cap on an accident tow versus a disabled vehicle. Because he does, he does not, he does not rate, he does not oversee that one. But there is a different charge for an accident tow, or an arrest tow, than a disabled vehicle tow, or a flat tire, or somebody needs gas. I mean, it, it's all, it's all laid out in stages, you know, so the customer doesn't get gouged for going out when he loses his rotation call for an accident. Where all the towers here know, an accident tow, the insurance company is paying for that, you know, it's beneficial to the tow company. But if the customer pays that, it's not beneficial, they just have liability, so.
Because you came out to give me gas or fix a flat, and you lost out on a four hundred dollar tow somewhere else.
You got it.
And that's what I'm saying, I, I want to be fair to you guys and fair to everybody else. I don't know if that's possible, but that's what I'd like to do.
It's a hard line, but yeah, that's, that's, that's the way it's set up over there.
And that's my point, okay.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that, I mean, truthfully, and all of us know, and I said this before, we don't get paid for a lot of stuff we do, you know, there's a lot of. I mean, we went out on a call last night, state police call, wanted out of fuel at two o'clock in the morning, guy said he, trooper was there, guy said he had money, we get there, collecting money, his credit card was no good. So we, we, we basically spent almost an hour and a half out on the side of the road, giving this guy fuel, we never got paid on that last one.
And unfortunately, we are, all are being hit by that, whether it's no insurance or no funds, anything like that.
So my, so my, my question was, what is, what is Tony not doing that, that should be done? I, I think Tony's doing a great job, he's handled it well. The second thing was, you know, we're not taking, you know, you don't have any complaints in the county because the owners are taking care of the complaints as far as money wise, because if, I, I had a guy that called me two nights ago. That's been incarcerated for six years, and asked me if I still had his truck, and I did, and I knew, I knew him, and I, you know, I could have charged him, you know, at least thirty days of storage legally, but I worked it out, he was going to give me his truck for five hundred bucks. That's the way we do business, that's the way we got to do business, so on, on a lot of occasions with customers, we don't take these, we could actually take these customers to court, the ones in the county that are paying us, fill the courtrooms. And the customer's going to be complaining more to, to you guys, because they feel like they're not being, you know, being done fairly, but you know, we're, we're actually eating the biscuit and not taking these people to court and just, just throwing their hands up going, hey. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll get an insurer of them tomorrow. So, I mean, as far as getting paid from an accident from an individual, the percentage is probably five percent out of ninety-five percent. It doesn't happen, so we all know that. If they don't have full coverage, we don't get paid, and we get stuck with their vehicle, and they can come get every personal belongings that they own out of their vehicle, and take as long as they want to, getting their stuff. It's just part of what we do in business, which really stinks, we're trying, we're in Richmond trying to change that, but unfortunately, there's a lot of hoops we got to cross.
But, but there has to be some benefit for the towers to be part of a tow board. I would think other counties would just arbitrarily say we just need a tow board. I think you would find some benefit for yourself. I, I don't.
So if a customer doesn't pay me, can I come to the tow board and ask the tow board?
That's not, that's not the purpose of that. In, in any business, and we don't want you to take losses ever, but that's part of doing business. I was in business, that's part of doing business. And I'm sure we try to compensate for that when, when it occurs at a frequent basis, and I understand that, but I just have to believe that other counties across and within the state, right, are a little bit. We're not just arbitrarily saying we need a tow board. I think it gives you guys an opportunity to voice concerns, to, to voice issues, to be heard by each other, and if we need to do something, then we need to support you. It, I don't see it as being a negative, and I just think that it's being viewed as a negative, I just don't see what's negative about it. That, that the towers are the ones that are providing the majority of the leadership to this board to make sure we're doing what's beneficial for the tow family. How can that be negative?
Reggie, let me give you one of the negatives.
Yeah, help me, yeah.
Sheriff Harris, because he's on the tow board.
Right.
And the problems that he has, as big as Spotsylvania is with all the number of records that they have, Floyd's towing and everything else, their limits are only nineteen, as big as that county is. You mentioned with Tammy about the, the pie, and that type of thing, there's only nineteen, and the negative is, so many people have told him, I want to get on the towing list, but I can't get on it because you kept me from getting on it. And because so-and-so from the tow board, who's on the tow board, we've had a family too, so I'll never be able to get on it.
But that's where we come in then.
No, because they mean, you can limit it, that's what, that's, you can limit a tow board for the numbers, and that's what they get in Spotsylvania, but you can't get on there if their total is nineteen, they have nineteen in there.
Oh, they have a.
Yes, that comes, yes, man. They capped them, and that's on all of them. King George.
King George has seven.
Yes, but are they capped or not? And they capped it, and it's the same thing with Stafford, so you would have to set a cap, and I know that.
No, not we, not us.
The tow board.
Well, that's what I mean by that, what I'm saying to you guys, I apologize, so, yes, a tow board would have to, then can put a cap on.
It's part of, it's part of that.
They're, they would, no, they bring the ordinance to us and say, this is what we'd like to have as our tow board, for our towers in the county. We then say, we agree.
And every issue that comes with that, number of towers, all that, would all come to us.
No, it goes to the board.
Yes, sir.
No, it comes to us.
It would have to come to us approved. It would have to be approved.
They have a lawyer state.
Yeah, so there's this April sixth memo, which you should have, it has some helpful details about this, and again, you know, my role here is just to clarify the law on that, trying to take one side or the other. But the way the two statutes are, are written, one Sheriff Lippa just cited forty-six point two is twelve seventeen, and another statute forty-six point two dash one two three three point two. The way those are written, the tow board would be an advisory board, so it's going to act a lot like the planning commission would. So they're going, it's going to be made up of an equal number of towers, law enforcement, and some get from the general public, so you might not have every tower if you can't get enough law enforcement representatives to balance that out. But when you get that board set, they're going to advise you on how to write these ordinances about number of towers, rates, everything else that you can regulate, but then it all comes to you. So at the end of the day, what they've been talking about doing, what they do with these towers and these rates and regulations, that'll be your new job.
Well said.
Okay. Sheriff Lippa, do, do you have a cap?
Do we have a cap?
Yeah.
No, we don't, as long as they meet what's on here, and that's.
So if, if, if towing companies, so how many people are on your list right now?
Depends which side, east side or west side.
Total, how about total?
Total, total companies.
Total companies, we have.
Anywhere in Carolina.
So I have Bud's on both sides, one, two, one, Caroline Garage, two, Poplar Inn, three, Norton's, four, Hillcrest, five, and Eight Times, six.
Did they make a choice to be on the side?
It goes geographically, Floyd, and, and the splitting of the line, and I think that's what caused some of the problems and issues of what we had.
Well, no, Poplar Inn is, is really closer to the east side.
And that's, when that's the list of mine.
They're not west.
Because we divided by the power line, and that's what the First Sergeant's saying, that he will take a look at so ours could be the same. So when you're talking about the application, and I'll use them, it's in here, Woods is in here, he hasn't applied for our list, but he's on the state police list, because they have something different than ours. Because I don't think he can meet all of the, so.
So, but let me ask you this question, let me ask you this question, so if I meet all the requirements that are on your list, and you get all this, then, then I have to be put on the list.
You will be put on the list.
Can I, can, but can you change that list? Can, can you go today and change the list?
Well, everyone's.
I mean, can you, can you change, can you change, you, you can, you are the one, as Sheriff Lippa, you can change the list, like today, you can say, all right, here's requirements, and then tomorrow, you could say, you know, I'm changing my requirement.
Well, that has never been done, but you're asking me a question, you can't, because you're asking me a question.
You could have Floyd's towing tomorrow.
But let me explain that, when they end up meeting all this, and that's what Captain Crowder does, is he goes by for the inspection, so if they meet all this, and they're on the list, and when I'm hearing you say, can I control it? This hasn't changed, and this was revised five years ago. By who? The towers that are on here. That's where it is, number one. But, but wait, Reg, let me finish, and then you can, you can, because like I said, y'all can take it. And, and the, the other part of it is, the discipline that would come from the board of supervisors, from the advisory of the tow board, would be no different than what I could do, for if they violate the policy, and we have taken them off the list, have we, Captain Crowder, we have taken people off the list. We do that, because it's based on math, and it's based on what they.
But, you know, some things are said not in public, and some people may not have the same opinion that you have right now about how fair it is sometimes. So I understand what you're saying in terms of that policy, but again, I like for the tours to be able to have a conversation with themselves. It takes you out of it to some degree, right?
No, Reggie, somebody's got to do it. Get an advisory board, I've told you before.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, by the way, the only person. The only person, when they come to a consensus, that would have a disagreement, would be between themselves first, and then they would come and we would try to settle that situation without putting you in that situation. I don't, I don't think, that's why I look, and I'll speak for me, I don't think that's why I look. But I think they would be able to police themselves, regulate themselves, work within the framework, and bring it to us to bring resolution, and that's your.
Just run with this document, and I've read through it, what this, what this document does, that the sheriff uses, is it creates a level playing field. If you don't know what the rules are, you don't know when you're failing. If you know what the rules are, you know what the expectations are, then, then every single person behind us has an equal opportunity, and there's no cap. So what that allows the sheriff's office to do, or in our. So what that allows the sheriff's office to do, or in our case do, is if they know what the guidelines are, they know what is expected, the expectations of that tow, everybody gets a chance. And no one is kept out because that way it's fair. Now, if you, if you put a tow board in, the tow board has a, has a, has a right to take these and say, yep, these are our guidelines, this is what we're going to follow. So it's still level. And then you have the situation of, as, as Mr. Black said earlier, are we creating a monopoly? Are we preventing people from coming in? And that won't be a decision the Virginia State Police or Sheriff Lippa and the Caroline Sheriff's Office will make. That'll be a decision that the tow board, who is, is an advisory board to the board of supervisor will make. The power of the tow board comes from the board of supervisors, who ultimately will, and I hate, I'm just going to speak freely, will inherit any of the issues that come with this. But if you look at this document, if you read through it, it outlines specifically what the expectations are for him. Our document's a little different. We have some leeway that he doesn't have. But we're more driven by the interstate system than the, than say Sheriff Lippa. That's our primary function, is that interstate, keeping it open. Because if it's not open, it affects every single person in this building. But if you know what the rules are, it creates a level playing field.
Sheriff Lippa, once again, I don't think I heard your answer on this. You do not have a cap.
We do not.
If they need to crack you, I think you do.
Somebody controls that.
Right, 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 I understand. I get that, I get that, I get that, yes. In, in the sense that if they're not a zone board, they have to come to us.
Correct, I get that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, in, in, in light of, we've spent a lot of time, can we give the first sergeant some time to come on board, take a look at what he's got, what he can do? Can we put this on the agenda for our January board meeting? Tell us what, you think you can figure this out by, like, January, whatever, January 15th, 14th? Somewhere, first Tuesday in January?
Second.
And talk about how we can line some of these things up? And I'll talk to some of my towers and see if that fixes a lot of this. I don't know that I personally want to inherit yet another set of issues. And I don't want to give our staff any more due. We've got enough going on. It's, it's another staff person to go meet with the tow board because it's going to be just like the planning commission. There's going to have to be some involvement. More things are going to come to us. It's going to come through staff. It's going to come to the board agenda. I'm trying to be mindful of what we've got. I'm willing to talk to anybody that's here to hear. You've heard what I've had to say tonight. I'm, I'm trying to fix the problem without creating, because you all are ultimately going to have to come to some sort of a meeting, whether it's once a month or once a quarter. And I can tell you that it doesn't sound bad once a quarter until it seems like it's coming up every other week. Because once a quarter just seems to creep upon you. Now you're at a meeting, and now you've got a package that somebody's going to give you at least a look at, a meeting to come to. And when people start missing, you don't have a quorum, and then the meeting doesn't really happen, then somebody says to us, hey, we haven't had a quorum at a meeting. Um, what are you going to do about it? So then we're back to this situation again, talking to everybody about, you know, we have a tow board, advisory board. You guys haven't really made all your meetings. Now it's back on us again to go, okay, what are we going to do? Before we start down that path of, because we've all seen it before. We've, we've had commissions and committees that haven't worked out quite right. And then they're back in front of us going, this ain't working. So I, I'd like to give you an opportunity to take a look, fresh set of eyes. Everybody's heard, I mean, if anybody else has got any other question, we have an answer or hasn't been asked, by all means, let's get it out tonight so that we can start wrapping up, or at least looking at where we can go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My plea of the common is if we do a tow board and you all send us recommendations from the, to the council, if we say no, don't be upset with us. We will listen, we will vote, but we won't always agree, as Mr. Underwood said. It will happen. So that, that is something, right now you're dealing with one person, you'll end up dealing with six.
So that, that's a good question, I guess. If we make a recommendation aboard and they don't agree, then what happens after that?
They, they would be the ultimate, I'm talking to the majority of circuit court, right? If, if they do.
That would be the board decision if you want to pass the board decision like any other board.
I'm just saying, it's something else you've got to think about dealing with. Knowing of the other.
And, you know, I said this at the very beginning, I'm okay with it. If you want a sergeant advisory board and you guys want to take this, I.
Tony, I could be with every judge this week, just.
I know, I say, I'm just letting you know, I'm letting all of them.
I'm gone three nights this week, and one of them's not even to your event tomorrow night.
But again, we would, we would put a representative on there. So it would be whatever you all wish to decide.
Sheriff Lippa, have we had, have we had a, I guess there's two things it goes back to. There was an original incident that, that has made, that made these meetings take place. And I think we all agree whatever happened was, I mean, whatever the charges were, I guess eventually it was. How, if, if we have a set of rates, how did that happen? I mean, if we have, if you have a set of rates, and how was someone, how would that, how is that even possible? I mean, I guess, how are we here tonight on that?
Well, y'all are here because it started with a mistake that was made by our deputy, first of all, not to use AAA. And AAA ended up showing up. It was so complex and so many things, but the bottom line was, that was resolved.
Right.
It was resolved. If we have any other complaints, and again, I brought Captain Crowder here because he's the one that handles the records for me. He's the one that would, if they violate anything, he's the one that recommends what happens by policy. And then I enforce that policy. And I can, and I can go back, like I said, without mentioning, you know, a name or two, there was a situation where it didn't meet VDOT standard on an entrance. And they were removed from our list because they weren't meeting state standard. And we were able to do that until it got rectified. And it's no different than what we have here. If we get the complaints, we investigate them.
Yes, sir.
We will follow them all the way up. And, and that's what happened in this situation because I think it, it got to my office, but it didn't get to me. And once it got to me, and I, that was taken care of within a week.
Have we had any incidents since?
No, sir. Did we have any before? No, sir. Have I been dealing with records since 1979 when I came here? And I've been in charge of them for 25 years. So 38 years and 25 years. And even when I was the state police first sergeant handling that, we did not get most of our, well, our complaints came in was the scenarios that you two brought up. Because everyone in here had scanners. And everyone was charting when the next one was going. And I would say, most of our complaints come from them.
Right.
Of why I wasn't called, right, Captain Crowder?
Yes, sir.
And we handle a lot of them by talking to them and say, wait a minute, you didn't get this, or you didn't answer that. We can't help it, we got to go to the next one. And then you have situations that can be right there, right in front of Poplar Inn, and it's bad, and we got to have them removed. And we pull them because Carl's right there and you pull them in there.
Carl's off in Richmond towing my car, so you call somebody else right in front.
And then in essence, let's say, let's say Bud was supposed to be the next one on the list. And he was supposed to get that, and he didn't get it. Or we've called them, and they, they start out that way. And then what do we do? We put them back on the top of the list. We treat this as fair as we can treat it.
And then that's when the verbiage came in, is, hey, owner request. Instead of a zone. And that way, if they were listening, they knew, hey, Mr. Underwood requested, you know, a specific Floyd's tow. And that way, that's why the troopers and deputies are using that verbiage. You don't want him to tell you.
And, and, and then you could have it.
We've already talked about that earlier.
And I'm going to throw another complaint to you. Is when you could have a vehicle that came in with a Florida tag, but yet it was an owner's request. And then they said, how does an owner from Florida get this? Well, the owner's got rental, this person is a rental car. He's shusing a rental. So I've seen that come through. And so again, we investigate it, and, and we've handled them.
And there's some rental car, rental car companies that have specific contracts with specific companies. And I know it's crazy, along the 95 corridor. There's a tow company in Spotsia that picks up all of, I think it's either Herbst or Avos. And it's, so it's not even go off the zone. It's, if, there is a memo filed, this is basically, if these vehicles are to be towed, this company has a contract with that specific tow.
But that's by default driver request. So is it, I guess, I guess my, then the real final question is that we need to get to, is it, do the owners or the towers even want a tow board? Do they see any benefit?
I think that's a.
And I guess that's what, I think that's what it boils down to. We may see it as one thing. Certainly, I may see it as one thing. I may be mad as heck, but if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's not beneficial, then let's not waste time.
Yeah, but there, but there may be, and I agree with you, but there may be some towers here that aren't comfortable with openly voting.
Right, so, so let's put up a system where they can call us or send in a, if they want to, one of, I mean, there's seven, right?
I'm not embarrassed to say, I'm not, I'm not really for, for towing. I have to meet, I, I have to meet every quarter with a new towing situation we got going on. And I do meet, meet with a towing association originally.
Right.
So I'm like, like you guys. Tonight was a meeting, I got a meeting tomorrow night with, with a towing situation. And Thursday night, I got a meeting with a towing situation, with the different, different folks and the whole different ball of wax. So, yeah, it's, it gets, it gets quite a bit, it really does.
And I think that's great if they want to speak with you. But I think you need to also find out if, whose list they might be on, and whether they even have a company in Caroline County. I think that's in all fairness too. So again, I know that upsets some of them.
How about, how about, can we, can we, would it be fair to say then, from the towing people that are already currently on our list, that, I mean, because they're the ones who are approved in Caroline, kind of the ones who are doing the towing. So we have, what'd you say, seven on the list?
Six.
So there's only six that should be responding, right?
Yeah.
So why not have the six towers that are on the list respond to the county administrator and say whether you're in favor or not, it could be totally anonymous? So that way it would not, would that be fair?
We're going to have four, six here, right?
Yeah, but we could get all six if they're on the list but not here. So they could call them.
I don't think that's fair. If, if they met, if they meet the state police requirements, you know, we can send it into whether they should vote on whether a tow advisory board should be voted.
So when it's the state.
Is he not on that?
They're still towing the county, so they're.
Still towing the county.
They're still towing the county, so they.
He's not in, he's not in the county.
But he's towed in the county, so he's on the state list.
I'm on the state list, but I'm not on the county.
Right, so then.
Your impound area is not a county.
No, my impound area is in Caroline, in Fort Worth. I have an impound lot in Fort Worth.
But nothing's registered in the county, correct?
My trucks don't have Fort Worth address on them. That's the problem.
So you're considered a King George business?
Well, I have a business in Fort Worth. I didn't get through by business number for the county list because my trucks didn't have.
Because your trucks are registered in King George. That's not, that's not the criteria.
It is a criteria for the county.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the list when I filled out the application to get on the tow list initially. And Tony and I had this discussion. He said, this gentleman down to inspect my trucks. The trucks passed. And then it was a problem. Nothing was on that list, that, that, the sheriff department list.
At the time.
At the time.
So see, and see, I think that's something that they should be able to, to rectify grandfather or, and change. And that's a good example. There, he's been.
Well, in essence, I think what we had to do was to put both names, and I think it was dealing between you and your son of who was doing what and where.
You wanted, you wanted the addresses on the trucks. And my trucks are already wrapped.
Right.
That's what it was. That's all he had to do was put that on.
But, but it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the initial application or the tow ordinance from the sheriff department that I still have, that I can show the board and see if it's changed in his ordinance now.
Wait, wait, you said your trucks were already wrapped, meaning they were signed.
They were lettered, yes, sir.
They were detailed.
So the sign said King George. You changed the policy.
That's King George, yeah.
If he put that on there, he could be on it.
But we said it wasn't on the original application.